Good evening and welcome to the reorganization of the Town Council of San Antonio. Board of adjustment. Today is Sunday, January 13th, 2021, at 2:00 PM. In accordance with NJFS Town Power 4-6 at SAC, uh, the 30 open coverage meetings act, announcement saying that this meeting has been provided by the board secretary um, to the Daily Record and Star Ledger, published on October 22nd, 2020, by stating the time, place, and date of all regularly scheduled meetings, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Uh, this meeting can also be accessed via WebEx with a link found on Parsippany's website, www.parsippany.net. Um, we have already sworn in on the four reappointed members, Mr. Berkowitz, Mr. Willins, Mr. Joskowitz, and Mr. Pareek. At this point, nominations for chairman will be taken.
Hi, this is Casey Pareek. I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Ira King for the chairman of the board.
I'd like to second it.
Um, are there any other nominations?
Nominations be closed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with a motion and second, I propose for chairman. All in favor? opposed? Chairman will take over.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
So are you going to do the rest of the reorganization?
Okay, go ahead. Bob?
Are you going to do the rest of the reorganization then, or am I?
Um, I could do it.
Why don't you just go ahead and do it? Because you have everything in front of you. Go ahead.
Okay, um. So we will now take nominations for, um, vice chairperson.
And I would like to nominate Mr. Snyder.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Ira King.
Any other nominations? Motion to close nominations. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We are looking to, um, reappoint board secretary Nora Jolie.
I nominate Nora Jolie.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, um. We have, uh, John Chadwick, our planner, Chaz Holloway, our engineer, and Peter King, our attorney.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Thanks, everyone. I appreciate it. I look forward to working with the board for the upcoming year.
Same here. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Same here. Thank you.
We'd just like to thank all of our volunteer members of the board for their dedication. Um, you know, some people ask me why I'm, why after 30, this is my 32nd year, why I'm still doing this? And it's a labor of love. Um, I, I just look, I look forward to these meetings, and sometimes at the end of the night, I want to go bang my head against the wall. But it, it, it is true, truly a labor of love. With that said, I thank you again for electing me for chairman for more years. Okay, so we have some resolutions. The resolutions, uh, 2029, 2033, and 1927. Nora, can everyone vote on all of those resolutions?
They're a little different. Can everybody please mute them? We're getting a lot of feedback.
A lot of feedback.
Mr. Chairman, can I just offer a little tech support to hopefully resolve this issue? If everyone defaults to mute, when you want to speak, all you have to do is hit the space bar, and when you release it, it automatically puts you back on mute. And that way you don't forget, and there's not all this overlap that's causing the feedback.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, so the first two, um, are the same. The second, or the third one is, will be separate.
Nora, I can't vote on any of this, just, right? That's what I thought I saw in our emails, which is fine, because I wasn't there.
You're correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to interrupt you. Uh, the first two, Berkowitz, Joskowitz, Pareek, Prasad, Ready, Willins, and Ira King.
Mr. Berkowitz, you want to?
Resolutions, application, 2029, and 2033.
Second.
Any discussion?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Pareek.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willins?
Yes.
Ira King.
Yeah.
Did Bernie do the first two, or just the first one?
First two. The first two.
Okay, the third one, Berkowitz, Pareek, Ready, Willins, and Ira King.
Well, I'm going to abstain on that, because I wasn't at one meeting.
I move the adoption of the application 19:27.
Second.
Any discussion? Nora, please call.
Pareek?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willins?
Yes.
Ira King.
Yes. Nora, is no correspondence or any carried cases that we carry or anything?
No, they're not. No, they're not.
Okay, let's go into case, uh, application 2037 Herman and Clerk Quink, Levin Greenbrier Road, uh, seeking a C variance to construct a handicap addition.
Herman and/or Clary Crank, who's going to provide testimony? Who is going to provide testimony in this application?
Have to unmute.
Okay, Herm, Herman and Claire, if you can unmute, you need, we can't hear you. Okay, you have your technical, great. Okay, who's going to provide testimony?
Uh, basically, we all are. My name is Richard, a family friend, I'm helping out with this.
Okay, so you can make the application, and you can't represent them, you're not in the team. Uh, if you're, if you're a factual witness, then you can provide testimony. Are you going to provide factual, uh, testimony?
Uh, yeah, they're the owners. They're the owners of the property.
Okay, the owners will, but I'm talking about you, sir.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm just here to help them.
So, um, Herman and Claire, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to the board is the truth to help you God?
So help me God.
Okay, and you are the owners of the subject property?
Yes.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, are the owners an applicant?
Mr. and Mrs. Quink, please turn down their volume, we're getting a lot of feedback.
Did you turn down the volume?
Okay, let's, let's hope this starts going a little smoother. All right, you want to, according to your application, you want to build a new one-story handicap bedroom over an existing pre-1989 concrete slab measuring 17 feet 8 inches by 17 feet. The variances that you need um, are for an accessory side yard, pool patio area. Uh, you're asking for a one-foot legalization, and you're asking for impervious coverage of 33.64 where 30 is allowed. Would you please explain your application a little bit so that the board understands exactly what's going on?
Uh, hold, hold on one second. I'm sorry, hold on.
Okay. We're here to approve the addition has been built in the patio.
And nothing else has changed.
Nothing has changed in 40 years. So we just don't want to remove anything else.
Uh, can I, can I explain this for them?
Yeah, why don't you translate for them? Okay, you're just translating for them. You're not, you're not.
Okay, so the permit was already issued. A, a handicap accessible bedroom's already been built. Uh, the, the issue was that, uh, there was, uh, some slight, um, discrepancy in the impervious coverage on the lot, and it ended up being three or 4% over. Uh, but it's been that way for 40, 50 years. This isn't anything new that's changed. And, uh, the idea of the, the variance here is to, is to memorialize, legalize wherever the pre-existing condition that's been here. Uh, they purchased the house in the, uh, in, in the 70s. Um, the only change was the addition of a pool, uh, that was approved in the, uh, in, in the early 80s, and nothing else has been changed or added since then. And the addition was built on a pre-existing patio that was in the, uh, the backyard as a handicap addition for, for Colleen, uh, their daughter.
So how, how is it discovered? Why did it here?
I didn't get that. Sorry.
How is this discovered?
We wanted to build, uh, an handicap room for my daughter, who's disabled, on the downstairs patio that's been there for forever, 40, over 40 years.
Did you resurvey the property?
Yes, so we resurveyed the property, and that's how it was discovered.
And how long has the pool been there?
Oh, for over 40 years.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, I believe that the pad, the pool in the patio is pre-existing, but the, uh, addition is something that you want to construct now, correct?
No, the addition's already built.
So everything is already built, the pool, the, uh, patio around the pool, and this is just to legalize both the, uh, addition, the handicap addition that was built in the 80s, I think your testimonial?
No, no, the addition, the permit was issued for the addition several months ago, and it's been built already. Uh, it was built on the pre-existing slab that was there, um, since the early 80s.
Okay.
So there's, there's no, there was no new, uh, concrete work, no, no new foundation, nothing. It was all built on the pre-existing, so Colleen could be on the ground level. Um, but she can't be upstairs, and she can't walk.
Okay, so when was that, when was that addition constructed, finished, built?
Uh, it was September, October.
And, and did you provide those, um, the, the documents, the building department, the drawings?
Yes, and it was always, it was approved, they issued the permits pending, uh, the memorialization of the, uh, it was, when they looked over the zoning, it was slightly over, and they said it's got to go in front of them.
And everything has been inspected by the building department?
Yes.
Excuse me, can I just clarify? So the point being is, you had an existing patio, pool, and everything. You built a room above the patio, right? And you got approval to do that, and when they did that, then they came in. So you're not changing the existing coverage, impervious coverage over the fence, uh, nothing, right?
Nothing, nothing.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, so it sounds like we have a situation that we've lived with for the last 40 years, and nobody's complained, and now all of a sudden, because you try to do something good for your daughter, you're faced with coming before this board. Um, are there any other questions by any members of the, of the board? Are there any members of the public that have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? As far as, Mr., um, uh, Mr. Hocker, do you see any, uh, any hands up? Mr. Hocker, do you see any hands up?
I do not.
Okay, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Quink, there's nothing else you'd like to add, right? You've, you've given all the testimony you want to do?
Yes.
Okay, are there any members in the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? Mr. Hocker, you hand your hand?
No hands are raised.
Okay, will some, a member of the board make a quick, uh,
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, this is again, one of those cases with a, if you took the water off the calculation, you wouldn't have a variance.
Very good point, Mr. Chadwick. Thank you for forgiving. Someone, someone like to make a recommendation?
Bernie, I'll move a regulation. Oh, I recommend, can I do both?
Yes.
Recommend we grant the application. Number one, if it exists. Number two, it's to help, uh, disabled person. And number three, it already, uh, is de minimis. So I would move application 20:37, that we grant the variance for Herman and Clerk Quink at Levin Greenbrier Road, Block 7051, eleven, and there for the zone. Grant the variance is necessary for the construction of the handicap addition. Was there also a request for, was there something additional to the pool patio?
No, no.
Because it's in the, it's in the zoning.
We have, we have to, we have to legalize the other two parts.
I move that we legalize the, uh, the, the side yard patio and the impervious coverage.
Second, Joskowitz.
Any discussion? Nora, call.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Yes.
Pareek.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Ira King.
Yeah. The result to Mr. and Mrs. Quink is the variance is granted. You're all set now, you're all ready, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Happy New Year.
Next case is Rita and Pedro Magvatang, Centertown Drive, C variance to construct.
Uh, Pedro and Rita, if you could unmute yourself, please.
Hi, everybody. Good evening.
Good evening.
You're, I'm going to swear you both in. Could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board is the truth to help you God?
We do.
And for the record, you're the owners of the subject property?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You're sworn, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, two witnesses are sworn, um, as factual witnesses.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Magvatang, you're, you're seeking a two-foot variance rear yard and side yard for a shed. Uh, I assume that this, the position of the shed makes sense in terms of the size of your backyard, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and if you moved it any farther out, it would infringe on your, uh, the, the size of your backyard, is that correct?
I don't know. What's that?
What do you mean by that?
You don't, you don't want it, you don't want it six feet in and eight from the side. It's going to take up more of your backyard, is that correct?
Yes.
That's right, that's right.
And, and have you just, have you discussed? Does anybody, does anybody have any complaints? You notified all your neighbors, right?
Yeah, we did. And, yeah, we did this fine, we did this fine.
And, and no.
And they have no complaints.
No complaints, okay?
Yes, thank God.
Thank God, thank you. Any other members of the board have any questions of these witnesses? I hear none and see none. Are there any members of the public who have any questions of this witness? Mr. Hocker, if you see anybody, would you let me?
There are, there are no one.
Thank you. Uh, there's nothing else you'd like to add, right, Mr. and Mrs. Magvatang?
Uh, nothing to add.
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? Any hands?
No hands.
Somebody on the board, please make a recommendation.
I, I will, I'll be voting for this. This is, uh, de minimis in nature. Uh, the shed is positioned in a very, um, justifiable logical area, and, uh, it enhances the resident's ability to enjoy their property. I'll be voting for it. Let me just go into the application.
Go ahead, you can do it.
Okay. In the case of 20:42 Rita and Pedro Magvatang at 193 Centertown Drive, Block 252, Lot 11, Zone R-4, that we grant a C variance to construct the shed, or actually to legalize the shed, right? To legalize the shed and the 10-foot by 12-foot concrete pad.
Second, Ready.
Any discussion? Nora, call.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Pareek?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Willins? Willins? Unmute yourself.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
There you are. And Ira King.
Yes, the result is the variance is granted. Mr. and Mrs. Magvatang, you're all set. You'll get notice from the zoning, the zoning, zoning office that you're okay. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you. We appreciate the approval.
So we can leave now, sir?
Yes, you can.
Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Okay, let's call case 2038 Marie Gaddy, 62 Ludlow Road. She varies to construct an addition and legalize.
Is she on? Is, is Gaddy on?
Gaddy has to be moved over. She logged in through the public link, hold on.
Okay.
Mr. Willins, are you still playing golf?
No.
I've played the last two weeks.
Yeah, rub it in.
Rub it in.
The advantage of the broken cat.
Well, you couldn't invite me down there to play, you know, but.
Okay, uh, so she, she called in, we're going to unmute her, we won't save her.
Hello?
Is this, uh, Marie Gaddy?
Yes, it is.
Okay, uh, can you raise your right hand? Raise your right hand?
Yes.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before the board is the truth to help you God?
Yes, I do.
And you're the owner of the sub, are you the owner of the subject property, 62 Ludlow Road?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and you're the only witness who's going to provide any testimony?
No, I have Mark Swanson here, who is, um, the gentleman who's going to put the sunroom on my deck.
Okay, so he's the contractor?
Yes, he is.
Uh, sir, could you raise your right hand?
I have.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before the board is the truth to help you God?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Mark Swanson, M-A-R-K-S-W-A-N-S-O-N.
And the name of your company?
Leisure Living.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, two witnesses, the homeowner as well as the contractor, are sworn.
Thank you, sir. Um, Ms. Gaddy, you're looking to legalize a shed that has a one-foot side yard and a .5 rear yard. You also need a variance for yards and courts, open decks, uh, of the 29.41 where 24 is permitted, and building coverage of 24, 26.56 where 20 is allowed, and 24.36 is exist.
Hello, are you there?
Can, can you give us a little background on, um, the shed? Um, was the shed there when you purchased the property, or did you put the shed in?
No, I put the shed there. I've been on this property for 43 years, and, um, it's a, it's a Rubbermaid shed. It's about seven by 10. It's always been there in the corner. As you can see, it's a small lot, it's six by, uh, 60 by 100. So, um, you know, the lar, the yard is not that big, so of course we put it, you know, towards the back.
Has there been any, uh, controversy with your neighbors, either to the rear or to the side, with regard to the shed?
No. Not at all.
And the, the other thing that you want to do is you want to put a, a sunroom on? And I assume this is for your family enjoyment, uh, is this a screened-in room?
Um, it does have, it, it will have windows. It will have windows. No heat, but no heat, no, you know, there won't be any, it's, it's a, basically a three-seasons room that he's putting on top of an existing deck.
Okay, so and you, you have noticed all your neighbors, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions on this, of these witnesses on the testimony given?
No hands are raised. Hands are raised.
Thank you. There's nothing else you'd like to add, is that correct, Ms. Gaddy?
No, it's just that it, you know, I, I was, the reason I do it is, I, you know, I have no trees on my property, the deck is in the sun the whole day long and I can't enjoy it because it's too hot.
That's good, we, we hope, we hope this works out for you.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, are any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application?
No hands are raised.
Hands are raised.
Thank you. Can I get a re, a recommendation from somebody quickly?
Yeah, de minimis in nature, it's for the person to enjoy their property, I'll be voting for it.
Resolution, someone?
I'll do it. Application twenty colon thirty-eight Marie Gaddy, sixty-two Ludlow Road, lot three one, lot eleven point one, zone R four, recommend granting a C variance to construct an addition and legalize the shed.
Second Kaplan.
Thank you, any discussion? Nora, pull the roll.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Willand?
Yes.
Arvakin?
Yes. Result is the variance is granted, Ms. Gaddy, you'll, uh, be getting notification from the zoning board as soon as, uh, we memorialize this, uh, it will be next week most likely, so you can, Nora will, Nora will advise you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you very much, you also. Good night.
Good night.
Okay, let's call case twenty forty-nine.
Uh, Mr. Hat, Wang, Heng?
Yep, speaking, hi.
Do you raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give before the board's the truth to help you God?
I do.
And for the record, you're the owner of one fifty-nine All Avenue?
Yes, I am.
And you'll be providing factual testimony to this board tonight on the application?
Yes, um, I'm also joining in.
Who?
Hi, how are you? Javier Fuentes.
Who is this?
Hi, I'm Javier Fuentes, I'm the architect for the plant.
Okay, sir, then, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr., the applicant is sworn, I'm gonna swear the, uh, architect in. Sir, could you raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give before the board's the truth to help you God?
Help you God? Do.
Uh, are you licensed in, how's an architect in effect?
Yes, licensed in the state of New Jersey.
And you've provided that testimony before you through this board or other board?
This was my first board.
Okay, um, but all your licenses are in full force of effect? And how long you've been practicing, uh, architecture and, and providing drawings for various, um, clients?
Yes, um, it, it's been a year now, I've been licensed, um, and I've been, uh, in the field for eight years since my, uh, bachelor's degree.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe he is qualified as a architect.
I think that's fine, and Mr. Fuentes, welcome to the world of testifying. Okay, so, we're looking to put a small addition, um, which I'm a little bit confused about the size of the property. It says it's fifteen thousand square feet.
Right.
It's, it's an R three zone which requires fifteen thousand square feet. And it just doesn't look like the building occupies that much of the property. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's impervious coverage because of the size of the, uh, the driveway, okay, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct. Okay, so the building is de minimis when it comes to the size of the property, it's the, it's the, uh, impervious coverage. Um, you're not requiring any side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, only the, um, impervious coverage. Uh, there's a note in here from our principal engineer with regard to, uh, drainage. Uh, you'll make sure that whatever stormwater runoff does not, don't create any additional, uh, uh, problems for the neighboring, uh, property. Is that correct?
That, that's correct.
That's correct. Okay. Are there any other questions by the board? Any other questions by the board? I don't hear any, are there any members of the public that have any questions of these witnesses?
Mr. Arvakin, I do have a, a question.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Excuse me, before you start, can Mr. Hung please, uh, lower your volume, you're pausing feedback.
Alright, so my question is, if we feel that there's going to be a potential for runoff, a runoff problem into the neighbor's properties, can we get more information about the likelihood of that? I'd hate to approve something where we know we're potentially creating a problem before we approve it.
Right, yeah, I understand, um, I, I, I have, um, a sketch that I have drawn, but, uh, basically, we're gonna be connecting to the existing gutter, there's currently a gutter that connects to the ground and since we're gonna be excavating to put in a foundation, we're gonna have a drain line that connects to that and it'll connect to the downspout, so everything will, um, then be able to shed water and, uh, mitigate that from, uh, dispersing into any, anybody's yard.
Thank you.
Is that acceptable, Mr. Kaplan?
Sounds it.
Uh, Mr. Kaplan, as a condition, would you like the, um, town engineer to review the drainage?
That would make me and I would imagine all the neighbors feel better, so yes, thank you for that, uh, suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, as I, as I read, this is Nancy Snyder, as I read in the engineer's report, I mean, should there be a storm runoff issue even in the future after this is built? This applicant is going to address it pronto, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I appreciate that in there, but I, I have a hard time saying we're gonna approve this. We have been alerted to a potential problem and we're not taking any efforts to address it before it happens. But that's my concern.
So, I, what I will do, if, if this is the board's pleasure, I'll put that into the, uh, resolution that one of the conditions is, is that the, uh, town engineer review it and that the applicant will comply with all the, uh, conditions, um, and recommendations of the town engineer.
Right, uh, even post-project, you know what I'm saying, even post-construction.
Abso, absolutely, and, and we will be happy to, um, uh, communicate and, uh, coordinate with the engineer to make sure that we do address that um, any way possible.
Does that satisfy all the board members? Any questions? Any other questions by the board? Any members in the public have any questions to these witnesses?
No hands raised.
Hands raised.
Someone like to make a recommendation, uh? Someone like to make a recommendation?
Being that the applicant has agreed, Mr. Kaplan has agreed to avoid the problem of water runoff, I will be agreeing and recommending, uh, as the vote.
Did you ask what you wanted in the resolution, sir?
Sure, application twenty colon forty-one fifty-nine Ball Avenue, blocks fourteen, lot R, zone R three, recommend granting a C variance to construction, construct and addition and deck.
Second ready.
Nora Colwell?
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Willand?
Yes.
Arvakin?
Yes. The result is the variance is granted, we memorialize this at our next meeting, we'll be free next week. Have a nice evening, everyone.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, let's call case, um, nineteen oh seven Duba.
Who will be providing testimony on this case? Or representing the, um, applicant? Duba? Is there an attorney or any professionals who will be representing this? Client, this applicant?
Hello, can you hear me? This is Mr. Duba. Good evening, this is Mr. Duba.
How are you, sir, will you be providing testimony on this application?
I have an attorney, Mr. William Rush, and also a planner.
And, and, and I don't see them on, uh, the app, on the back screen, are they here, anyone?
Here, anyone? I see Mr. Costa, who is our engineer. I don't see our attorney nor our planner.
Okay, so you, you need your attorney, uh, your corporation, correct?
Yes, and he was planning on being on this call tonight, he's the one that sent me the link for the call, I spoke with him before. I'm gonna, if, if it's okay with the board, can I just send them a text message and see if he's having a problem?
Is he here, are, are we looking at him?
He just came on. I just see him on now. Mr. Rush, unmute.
Oh, evening. Are we, are we on to our application already?
Yes. Mr. Rush, you're up.
Okay.
The chairman has called your case, do you wanna put on, um, a little preamble as to what you're looking for and explain to the board a, a thumbnail of, of what's going on and then get into your case and call your experts, please?
Uh, yes, I would be happy to, I just wanted to see, are my experts on, is Mr. Costa already on? Uh, yes, Mr. Costa's on already and, and I will also have our planner available right after that. So, okay, so, um, I'm prepared to start, to begin.
Yes, please.
You can proceed, you can proceed.
Great, thank you, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is William Rush, I represent the applicant. In this matter, Bruno Duba, who is the owner of a property located at two sixty-four New Road. This application actually pertains to two parcels of land, two sixty-four New Road, which is block seven sixty-seven, lot twenty-six, and two fifty New Road, which is block seven seventy-seven, lot twenty-five. The applicant is seeking site plan approval and use relief to expand the parking outdoor storage currently permitted on two sixty-four New Road to the neighboring property two fifty New Road. Two fifty New Road is owned by Dr. Qasem Fahat and Dr. Elizabeth Lammer. Two fifty New Road was approved to be utilized as a dentist's office through resolution zero three colon seventy-seven on December tenth, two thousand and three. Upon completion of the dentist's office and the parking lot that was built on two fifty New Road, the property had approximately nine thousand square feet um, of unused and underdeveloped property remaining in the rear. It's on the underdeveloped and un, unused nine thousand square feet that the applicant is seeking to expand the parking and storage from the existing business on two sixty-four New Road. It's currently leased in place between the owners of two fifty and two sixty-four that governs the use of the property at the rear of two fifty New Road. Also, there are pri, there are two prior resolutions for the properties that affect both of these properties, there's resolution ninety-six colon fifty-nine, which was from nineteen ninety-seven for two sixty-four New Road, and there's resolution zero three colon seventy-seven for two fifty New Road, which was approved in two thousand and three. These resolutions have already addressed and approved all the necessary bulk variances for this development. Essentially, essentially this application is seeking use variance relief to permit the existing business on two sixty-four New Road to expand its parking on two fifty New Road. With that background, I'm in that place now where I'd like to call my first witness, who's engineer, Robert Costa.
Um, Mr. Rush, I just have one question, is, is your client gonna purchase that, or are you gonna subdivide that other, uh, piece of property?
No, it, it, they're looking just to expand it and use it through the use of a lease.
Okay, so you want, you want, so that, just so the board understands that you're, you're trying to get variance approval for a piece of property that's not owned by your client, but that will be leased by your client?
Correct.
So what happens when, wha, is, is that lease a ninety-nine-year lease or a long-term lease, or how many years is that lease for?
I believe that current lease is probably for five years, but we're looking to expand it. Obviously, the use of the property is gonna be subject to the lease and the owner of two fifty's, um, permission to be using that property pursuant to the lease.
And after that lease expires, if it's not renewed, what happens to this variance?
I assume the variance, like any other variance, will run with the property, but it's still gonna be subject to the lease agreements between the property owners.
That's correct, so then the, the, the property that your client doesn't own will have the variance on it?
Correct.
So they'll be able to do whatever this variance grants them, which is what, parking and outside storage?
On the rear, on the rear of two fifty, are you talking about that's the property that my client is, yeah? Um, they currently have that use through the variance that was approved through the resolution zero three seven seven.
So then, if, if that variance relief was already granted to that other property, what?
We're looking to expand the u, we're looking to expand the prop, the parking from two sixty-four onto two fifty, which is expansion of a non-conforming use, because that, the use on two sixty-four was approved in nineteen ninety-seven with the resolution.
Just so the board understands that.
Mr. King, I, I just have a question, and I would imagine that this is permissible, but someone can request a variance for a piece of property they don't own?
The, the owner of that property has to give them the, uh, right to do this, and I believe that they did do that. I, Mr. Rush, in your papers, I believe you gave the consent of that prior property owner, correct?
That's correct, Mr. King, yes, um, the, uh, the, Mr. Dr. Fahat has given permission for this application to go forward and he's aware of this application going forward.
So-
Do you have anything in writing on that?
Uh, yes, there was, um, actually, part of the application that was originally submitted was with Dr. Fahat's approval.
I believe all of that's in order. I looked through it, I believe all of that's in order.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Well, I'd like to correct one, one statement. Hello, I'd like to correct one statement, the dentist's when that was approved, did not have the parking lot.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the second half of that statement.
The dentist's office, when that was approved, did not have approval for the parking area that you are proposing into this application.
Okay, well, actually, from reading the resolution-
The dentist's off, the dentist's office in itself was a used variance.
Okay. After that.
So are you saying, John, no one has approval for the extra parking?
Correct. That's why they-
On the, on the dentist's property, I believe the, by, by way of history, I mean, John, you were, you were involved in this, weren't you, when, when this was happening? This, this was a two-step process. The property that Mr. Duba owns, I believe, if I remember correctly, there's a house in the front and there was a proposal to put a building and parking in the rear. There was a lot of controversy over the fact that it was residential property rear of the sub, this subject property. Parking, I believe, in and the building to the rear, if I remember correctly. Does that sound familiar, John?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then the dentist's office, what, as Mr. Chadwick says, was a used variance. There was, I, there was no other variance granted, to my knowledge. Is that correct, John?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the history of the property. Uh, there was a lot of controversy with regard to the owner of the apartments. Remember, do you remember this, John? Uh, with regard to trucks, um, idling and, 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 uh, toys, et cetera, et cetera. So I think you're going to have to make sure in your testimony that this is not gonna, this, these issues are not gonna come up again. I don't know if the owner of the residential property is attending this meeting. Uh, if, if that person is here, maybe they could raise their hand, so an orific knowledge.
Just so the record is clear, I was contacted by an attorney, um, Stephen Cochran, for the owner of the apartment complex um, behind there. He indicated that there were some certain concessions that they were looking for from my client and indicated that they may be appearing as objectors tonight. I don't see them here tonight, but we did reach an agreement on some of the concessions that they requested.
Are you gonna discuss those concessions?
I was gonna, I was gonna wait till the end of the application to see first and foremost if our application is even going to be approved. If our application is gonna be approved, there are conditions that I'm willing to concede to, to put into the resolution that I had made a verbal agreement with Mr. Cochran regarding, uh, his client's requests.
If I can interrupt for a moment, he is in as an attendee.
Mr. Cochran is available, okay.
Yeah, I'm just not sure. Why, why couldn't he disclose what the concessions are? Why, why do we have to wait until after the?
I can, I can disclose it now.
Well, I was gonna say, let the, let the attorney for the, uh, neighbor, uh, make his presentation if he feels it's necessary. Um, if, if it's, if it's really important that we find out now, then I'm sorry, and Mr. Rush is willing to disclose it?
Sure, I've, I've no objection to disclosing them. Let me just find his email to me. Um, there, he wanted to confirm that they're going to comply with ordinances that require the trucks idling longer than three minutes or fifteen minutes if temperatures are below twenty-five degrees, which we've agreed to. Um, no active trucks outside or outside repairs before six AM and, and after seven PM, Monday through Friday. Um, we're requesting to be, to that, to be reduced to five AM and seven, seven PM, Monday through Friday, with no activity conducted on the weekends. We're, we're in agreement with that. Um, they're also looking for the property to be maintained in a, in orderly fashion, which obviously we agreed to. And they asked that we replace the chain-link fence with a ten-foot steel safety wall um, at the rear of the property. We did not agree to that. We agreed that we would, um, if it is, if it is my client's fence that's in question, my client said he'll repair or replace the fence, depending upon, obviously, what needs to be done. Um, and if they would like privacy slats placed in the fen, in the chain-link fence, we're happy to do that as well. But I don't even know what a ten-foot steel safety wall is, what it would look like, what it would cost, or any other relief that it might trigger. So obviously, we're not agreeing to that. Now, out of the, out of the four requests, we're kinda, I, I say we're agreeing to three and a half of them.
Why don't we proceed, then?
Okay, um, so on any prior questions, I would like to call Mr. Costa at this time, who is our engineer.
Sir, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give before the board's true self, your God?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Absolutely. For the record, my name is Robert Louis Costa, C-O-S-T-A, three twenty-five South River Street in Hackensack, New Jersey. Uh, licensed professional engineer, three four seven oh two, professional planner, four six three nine.
And all your licenses?
Thank you, Mr. King.
All your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, I was too cheap to, I was too cheap to actually renew North Carolina, but I believe I, I actually renewed Pennsylvania.
Very good.
But in Jersey, we're good.
And you've been qualified in both, uh, either this court or other courts in the state of New Jersey?
I have. I'm currently the town engineer in River Ridge, planning board engineer, uh, city of Englewood, um. I think Bogota, I actually got last night. I wasn't even there. I think there's a couple other places. You're esteemed, you're esteemed engineer, Mr. King, to the upper right-hand corner in the screen, Mr. Holloway. I haven't seen him in a long time. Uh, Chaz, good evening tonight, but yes.
Congratulations, uh, Mr. Chairman. This engineer is sworn and qualified. Thank you, uh, Mr. Costa.
Mr. Chairman, my testimony will be brief, because apparently I'm not getting paid by the hour, and it's a lump-sum contract, so I will be in minutes. Um, I have very little to say. I went to the site yesterday. I took photos. Uh, my client, Mr. Duba, who's in the lower, uh, left-hand screen, needs to clean the property, and I think that was the argument from the adjacent property owner, and I believe there's some, that is true. There's some debris on the site. Uh, there's some tires, there's some, uh, it looks like an old cab or something that'll exist. And I think, uh, Mr. Rush, what you said earlier, you've agreed to all of that. As far as fencing, I'm not sure exactly what that means also. Uh, my recommendation to the board, and I think there was some correspondence back and forth this afternoon, maybe the board, if you could put some evergreen landscaping or variety, something like that. I'm not sure how many deer are in the area in this place. Um, this was approved in nineteen ninety-seven. It's an expansion of roughly, give or take, five thousand square feet, forty-five hundred, five thousand square feet, on the rear of the dentist's property uh, that my client has now parked some vehicles. People come in, they park their, uh, cars, they get in the trucks, they leave. When I was there, there were some trucks there. It was limited. And I guess at the end of the day, the trucks come back and they park there overnight. Uh, Mr. Rush, I think there was some questions about idling, if there's any idling. Uh, I'm sure the board knows. Mr. King, I'm sure you know, Mr. Holloway. It's a state law. The trucks, diesel trucks can't idle for longer, I believe, than it's possibly, I think it's three minutes or fifteen minutes. Um, so certainly they have to comply with the, the laws in the state of New Jersey. Other than that, I think it's a pretty simple application. I know Chaz had a couple of questions as far as whether it was a major development, minor development, but again, all of this is happening today. Uh, you're in an industrial area. New Road is extremely well-traveled, because you're between Route eighty, Route forty-six, and two eighty. And the majority of the area surrounding it is, is industrial and ensuring commercial. Uh, other than that, um, I, I don't know what else to say. It's, it's roughly forty thousand square feet, his property. There is a house in the front. There were people living in the front, and it's commercial in the rear. Uh, the dentist, there was nobody in his parking lot yesterday. It didn't look like it was open. And in the rear of the property, it's fenced, and this, this is the area roughly forty-five hundred square feet that my client is using for, uh, the storage of the equipment. Other than that, that, that's pretty much the application. There's no new driveways, there's no, no new improvements on the site, there's no new improvements on the roadway. Uh, basically, basically, that's it. Um, and again, I know there's a planner that I think that's gonna testify after me, but based on what I saw yesterday, I think it certainly blends into the character of the neighborhood. It's very commercial in nature. And again, I think there's some improvements that need to be done on the property. And if the board, uh, approves this application, I think they should be part of the, part of the resolution of approval. And I think that would help the neighbors in the back.
Mr. Costa, how many vehicles, uh, are going to be parked on this property?
Um, again, I don't know that question. I think the planner would, yesterday when I was there, um, there were four, uh, dump trucks, tandem dump trucks. It looked like there was one cab in the, in the, as you're looking towards the rear of the property to the right. And again, there was some tires. There, there was some debris that I think needs to get, to get taken out of there.
Mr. Costa, is, is there, is it asphalt back there, or is it, um?
It is not. It, uh, it looks like, uh, DGA, compacted DGA that's there. At one point, maybe it was gravel, but right now, there's, there's fines that are in it.
Is there any, any, uh, drainage issues?
I didn't notice any yesterday. Um, there was, there was some ponding closer to the building, but I didn't see any runoff. I, I went around the entire property. I took some photos. They probably didn't even know who I was, because there was nobody in the rear, there was nobody in the building. There was only one gentleman who came, got in his car and left. He never questioned me. But I didn't see any runoff or any dirt leaving the property to the north, uh, to the west, or to the south.
Now, Mr. Costa, your, your, uh, plan submitted for this application, do they indicate that it, there's ample parking for at least over twenty large-sized vehicles on that property?
I would say there is. And again, um, it, this is in speculation. My client runs the business there. So obviously, it, it's, it's operating as we speak. So I don't think there's any indication that he can operate. It's not like this is, we're coming before you to say, we're proposing this. Um, it exists. So his operation exists. This is what he does. Uh, he is the end user. So I think it's in his best interest to make sure it works. And i- in my opinion, based on what I saw yesterday, it's, it's a construction, you know, it's a construction company. Um, and it, and it seems like it's working with the caveat that I think it does have to get cleaned up slightly. And again, I think some buffering should take place. You do have apartments behind you. You do have residential. It's very close to the industrial zone. And I think if I was on the board, if I was a voting member, I would request my client to put in some buffering, and then just to protect the neighbors. But that would be my only, uh, that would be my recommendation to the board.
Could you also give us a little more information as to the things that you think need to be improved? You mentioned tires cleaned up, isn't it?
Well, there, there were tires in, in the rear of the property. Um, and again, I don't know if this is, if it's been there a while. I was only there yesterday. Uh, and my staff was there months and months ago. I guess with COVID, we were, we haven't been here in, in some time. I guess some of the meetings got canceled. I physically went to the site yesterday, and I believe, um, the attorney representing the apartments, I believe, is Mr., is it Cochran?
Yeah, Steve Cochran.
He sent a memo or an email, uh, yesterday afternoon. And, and again, I think that was one of his concerns also, that there's some debris there. And, and again, I, I, I don't think Mr. Duba would be upset with that. Uh, certainly, I, I don't think it's that big of an undertaking, and it certainly can be accomplished.
One other question. What is the, uh, the material in the parking lot of the new lot where he wants to put the equipment? I mean, is there, is it paved? Is it gonna be paved? Was?
It's, it's, right now, it is not paved. Um, it looks like it's DGA, in, in my opinion. It, it looks like, um, just a compacted, uh, stone dust. It, it was, it's very hard. Um, there were no ruts in there, and again, the, the tandem dump trucks that were there, there was no rutting. So it, it's had to be there for quite some time. I don't think it was put there a couple of days ago. And again, there was absolutely no ponding, with the exception adjacent to the, to the building. Um, the building has some, some overhead doors in the back. Uh, there's an entry on the side. Uh, the building itself is, is very nice. And again, there's a, there's a single-family home in the front, and it appeared that there, there are people living there, because there were some people outside, but I, I didn't go up and introduce myself.
Thank you.
When, when you, when you say people living, you're talking about two sixty-four or two fifty?
Two, um.
That would be two sixty-four, the, the, in the front.
The White House.
Two sixty-four. There's, there's two buildings on two sixty-four. So there's
I guess, there are.
A house in the front, there's a, there's a commercial building in the back. There's a parking lot in the back.
Right.
My understanding, that was all approved back in nineteen ninety-seven.
Right.
Um, the adjacent property is a dental office. There, there was nobody there. Um, there was nobody in the parking lot. There was nobody in the building. That's paved, that's completely fenced, and then the property runs deeper. And beyond that fence line, my client was utilizing that property roughly, I'm gonna say about forty-five hundred square feet, give or take.
So what changes? Because you're already there. And then, like, as you say, you keep saying few tires. I think it's a lot more than just a few tires. It seems like the, the, like, a little quadrant of, of that piece of property that is in back of two fifty is likely where the tires are. But I guess, my real question is, is that, you know, with the variance under consideration from the board, what changes? You're already there. And so what changes? That back fence, that white fence, that, um, is at the end of the dentist's parking lot to where you are, or your client's already storing vehicles on the opposite side of the fence? What, what, what changes? Does, does it become more intensified in regards to the vehicles coming in and out and idling? What changes?
I, I can't tell, I, I can't tell you what the changes are. I can only tell you what I saw yesterday. And again, there's a planner that's gonna testify, Mr. McDonough behind me, who certainly testify on that. What I saw yesterday was, there were, it looks as if cars come in, the employees come in, they park their cars, they get in their trucks, and I guess they leave. Because the majority of the site was empty. Uh, with the exception of the back corner closer to the apartments, the north, that would be the northwest corner. Um, there were, there was some debris, some tires. Um, it looked like an old cab, possibly, that was there. And again, I don't know if, if that's what the issues with the apartment, but that would be my recommendation to clean that up and then buffer that corner out where the apartments are. That would be my recommendation, again, to the board. And I think my, my client would be willing to do so.
Maybe I could just give some clarification to Ms. Snyder's question as to what's changing. Nothing is really changing. What spurred this application, as Mr. Costa testified to, is that this is, operation's already in place. And there were summons issued for violations, because they started this process without the actual necessary approvals. So there were summons, and there were violations that had to be addressed, probably to getting to this point. And now, my client, once they were summoned and realized that they needed this board's approval, is now coming before this board for approval. So nothing's really changing. They kind of put the cart in front of the horse, you know, and now they're basically coming back and asking for permission.
So the thing is changing, is they're already doing it, but they haven't been approved to do it. Now they wanna be approved?
Correct.
Got it.
Mr. Holloway, I have a question regarding the, the plan that was submitted. It has a note on it that, that states the gravel area was not counted for the calculation as it is not impervious. If it's, um, if it's, uh, compacted, um, I just wanted to either update the zoning table and/or add a question. Um, I just wanna confirm that there was no drainage problem.
Um, the only thing I, again, I, I didn't, I didn't see any, as far as, obviously, in rain. The only thing I can tell you, the property to the south, uh, is low and wet. There was standing water in the property to the south. I'm not sure if it's wetlands or not. Um, so I think if anything is draining, it's draining in that direction. And it's wooded. Um, that, that's all I could say. As far as the runoff itself, I don't know if it's affecting, I don't think it's affecting the properties to the north or to the west. If anything, any drainage probably either falls on site or goes to the south. But that area is very low and, and depressed. And I don't think that's gonna affect any other properties. It's almost like that's, that's the creation of the drainage ditch or the drainage, uh, detention pond, or literally a wetland there. That's what I noticed yesterday.
I, I would ask that, uh, if the board was to approve it, that it be subject to updating the zoning table to, um, not have the gravel listed as an impervious area? Or as a pervious area?
Say, Mr. Holloway, I didn't quite understand. Are you considering this as impervious area or not, this, this compacted, uh?
I, I, based on the testimony, I would, uh, say that the area is compacted, considered, be considered compacted. So it wouldn't be a typical gravel drainage area?
It's not.
So you're saying, consider it impervious, Chaz, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, I think we have another.
Chairman, there's, there's no, there's no question. That, that area in the back is, is well-compacted. There's large trucks that run on it. It's not rutted. Uh, Chaz, I, I certainly agree with you. But again, I don't think it's creating a drainage nuisance to the neighbors. It's not what I, what I witnessed yesterday. Um, in the event it is, I'll work, I will certainly work with your engineer, and I'm sure Mr. Duba will correct any of the, if there is any issues, to make sure that it is corrected, that it doesn't impact the adjacent properties.
And, and in the meantime, we can just update the zoning table to, uh?
No problem. Absolutely no problem.
Okay.
Can I interrupt one sec, one second? The, the discussion has led to another issue and you know, the, the previous surface expansion was illegal. They got summons for it. That's why they're here. But the other issue that is described is whether or not they've been encroached on a wetland area. And I have no testimony as to whether or not there is or is not wetlands adjacent out of this site.
Mr. Chaz, with all due respect, that's adjacent to the, the two sixty-four property. The property in question is further north. It's on the, it's on, it's in the rear of the dentist's office. The property that's being used was, was approved in nineteen ninety-seven. So all the approvals and all the use was back in ninety-seven. I believe we're here tonight for the property to the north, which is the rear of the dental office, which is it's a considerable distance away from what I'm talking about.
That's exactly what I was talking about. The area that you encroached on.
Right. That's what I'm saying. That's why we're here tonight with all due respect. But where I'm saying it's, it's low and it's wooded is to the south, not to the north.
Well, I've been out there a number of times over the years. And I think there has to be someone says there is no wetlands or wetland transition areas uh, in this part of the site, uh, this part of the project.
Well, there isn't. The, the, the property, even if it, even if it's dedicated as a wetland, it would be a fifty-foot buffer. But again, in nineteen ninety-seven, this was approved. The improvements went in. My, my client is operating on it.
About ninety-seven. I'm talking about the reason you're here is your client built something with not approvals.
I, I understand that. And then obviously that's why we're here. I understand that there were, there were violations. And that's why we're here tonight seeking relief. Um, again, what I testified to was the property to the south, not the property to the north. That's all I wanna clarify for the record. If, if he's done something wrong, he knows that. He submitted an application. He hired attorneys. He hired engineers. He hired planners. We're here to seek relief for him to operate behind the dental office, roughly forty-five hundred square feet. The board can say no. The board could say yes with conditions. But whether he, that you say no or yes, he, he, yes, there's no question. He did what he did. And he did it without approvals. And that's why we're here tonight. Um, I say this to a lot of people. If there was no lack of violators, I'd probably only have half of my business today. And that's why we're here seeking relief. Um, maybe he can get on later on, tell them why he did what he did or why the dentist did what he did. I don't know those answers. I can only tell you what I witnessed yesterday. We, we did some plans and we're here to seek relief. We're in an industrial zone. I described some of the property. Mr. McDonough will do the rest. And again, I don't wanna
Yeah, you're not really in an industrial zone. You're, you're not, I, with all due respect, I mean, there are resident, residential units in this area. You, you make it seem like we're in Secaucus. This is not Secaucus.
No, I, I didn't say that.
And secondly, I would appeal in, in light of all the conversation around, you know, the flood, uh, flooding and water and everything. I, I think there's enough experience on this board to know that New Road and to a degree Edwards has issues in regards to height, to, to water and drainage.
Okay.
So I mean, you make it seem like it's
No, no, I, I never said that.
And I'm not so sure, uh, this is accurate.
I'm, I'm not here to, to argue. I'm here, obviously, my client. What I said, and, and I'll go back on my testimony, there is residential behind you. And you're between an industrial zone and it's very commercial. New Road is heavily traveled, heavily traveled. And there are a lot of industrial buildings and there is commercial. But behind here is an apartment building and there's residents. And I understand that. And I said earlier, it needs to be cleaned up and it should be buffered. That's, that's how I started my testimony. And again, it, that, that would be my recommendation to this board and my client is willing to do so. I'm not trying to sugarcoat anything. No sleight of hand here. He operates a commercial business. He was allowed to operate a commercial business in nineteen ninety-seven and he want, and he expanded it. And if he expanded it incorrectly, we're here to try to make it better. That's all.
That's all.
Nothing more, nothing less. And I'm not trying to, Porcipity is a great term. I'm not trying to, to say anything against the community or anything else.
I've been here for a second. Um, as part of resident ninety-six fifty-nine, which was dated for July ninth, nineteen ninety-seven, it was a continuation of the original approval. There was a finding of fact with respect to the wetlands. Um, and it was found in number three subsection A, which says that, um, the engineer at the time indicated that the lands adjacent to the subject property were considerable wetlands and required buffer areas. In essence, therefore, the existing buffer of the adjacent properties provides more than adequate buffer area and is therefore in full compliance with the spirit of the ordinance. So in nineteen ninety-seven, the, there was a finding that there were wetlands and that there wasn't, the buffer was sufficient to keep the property in compliance with the ordinance with respect to the wetlands.
But now your client has approached on that property, correct?
Sorry?
Now, now your client has encroached on the property, the other property?
No, uh, this is, this is two sixty-four. This is the property that was approved in nineteen ninety-seven. The encroachment is going from two sixty-four on to two fifty. Two sixty-four is remaining exactly the same.
I understand, but expanded use by encroachment and that resolution did not contemplate that?
Again, I'm, I'm not an engineer, but the resolution in two thousand and three with respect to two fifty New Road does not make any reference to wetlands. Again, I'm, I'm not saying there aren't any. I'm just saying I can only go by what I have in front of me. And the resolution from two thousand and three does not make any reference to wetlands or does not contain any restrictions with respect to any possible wetlands affecting that property. I think as Mr. Costa testified to is that the wetlands area is more to the south of two sixty-four. And what we're to do is expand northward into two fifty. So further, the expansion is further away from the, what, according to the ninety-seven resolution is existing wetlands.
And, and Chaz, has any of the wetlands, uh, statutes, laws, uh, been modified or changed since nineteen ninety-seven?
The, um, the ultimate, uh, decision for whether wetlands, uh, exist, uh, would be through the NJDEP, through a presence absence and/or the quality of any buffers. So the, um, the governing source on it, something like that would be the NJDEP.
And you usually, you usually get like a delineation letter or some type of a letter from them?
They, there's, there's two ways you can go about. There's a presence absence determination where they just give you a letter that yes or exists or doesn't exist. And then if you think there's more than that, the, uh, will come out and verify what the surveyors put in a, as a flag, the wetland areas.
And, uh, uh, you know, from the application, are you, um, satisfied that there are, there are no, um, wetlands, uh, you know, issues here? Or would you want further information?
Well, we could, um, additional information about exactly where it is, so we don't impact the buffer would be, would be warranted. Wouldn't the town engineer know that? There's commercially available the, uh, tax maps and the flood zone maps. Um, I don't have it right with me right now for this area. It can be provided. Um, maybe Mr. Costa can provide that information and we can assess the, uh, the site and whether the wetlands are an issue or not.
Right. Well, and again, just, just to clarify the record, I'm talking about the lot to the south that was wooded. But again, the expansion is to the north and it's probably over a hundred, more than a hundred feet away. Just for clarity of the record. So the, the lot in question is, is behind the dental office. I'm sorry.
So we can get evidence of no, uh, wetlands or not? What is the answer? Or do we need evidence? Or is there some alternative that we can do? Can we grant the variance subject to the applicant producing a letter saying that there is no, there are no wetlands? What, what? Mr. Holloway, what do we do here? You guys are
Yes, that would be sufficient in this case if it really is, if it's that far away, the typical, the typical upper is fifty feet.
So Chaz, uh, what would you require, uh, the applicant to submit to make it a condition of the, uh, resolution?
If they submit a, a plan showing the property, uh, property line versus where the wetlands are. Is that this, this, the distance would be helpful? It's an ordinary wetland. Now the, uh, it doesn't require a higher buffer than fifty feet.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? By the board? Any members of the public have any questions? Nora, any hand?
No hands raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Am I? Uh, how many vehicles are on the site or, or construction vehicles are on the site at any one time? And she would be limiting it?
I believe the, uh, tenant uses approximately, as far as vehicles with respect to the both properties in parking, approximately twenty to twenty-five vehicles.
Currently, we're dealing with a specific sized piece of property. Should we limit the number of vehicles that are allowed on this property? So it doesn't become overcrowded?
I, I know we have no objection to a limit of twenty-five vehicles, but we wouldn't object to that if the board sees fit.
Is twenty-five vehicles a reasonable number? Who, who can tell us that?
That's currently what's being used there and based upon, uh, maybe Mr. Costa could just provide more information based upon the square footage and the trucks that he witnessed at the site.
Well, maybe your client, can your client provide some testimonies to that too?
Uh, my client could provide that, the fact that these, they're using those trucks there. I mean, obviously he's not an engineer. He cannot provide, you know, he can't break it down per square.
But he knows how many vehicles he has there from time to time or?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I, I'm aware that there's approximately twenty to twenty, twenty to twenty-five vehicles there on a, on a daily basis.
That's my question.
I'm happy to put my client on if you'd like to question him directly as well.
At some point in time, I think that'd be good.
It might be helpful if your client, uh, maybe testified and explained his business in a little bit more detail. Uh, it's been almost twenty-five years since his original application. Uh, I remember the application. I remember construction agreement, but maybe he can explain a little bit about the ins and outs and, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. I mean, I'm happy to call him now if you'd like to hear him now, or would you like to hear the planner first and then my client? I have no, uh, objection either way.
It's your, it's your case. Go right ahead.
Um, okay, at this time then I'll
Chairman, members of the board, thank you.
Then I'll call the owner of the property, Bruno Duva. Mr. Duva is the owner of two sixty-four New Road.
Mr. Duva, raise your right hand. You swear from testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
I do.
And for the record, you're the owner of the property, uh, and the leaseholder of the encroached property that you encroached on, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, Mr. Duva, obviously you've been on this, this, uh, call all evening. Uh, you've heard some of the questions. Why don't you give the board some background as to the development of the property, the use over the years and the current use of the property, including the number of trucks on the site?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. As Mr. Rush has explained earlier, the property was approved for the use back in nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, myself and my father at that time were, were running thi- this operation. Uh, um, the operation expanded. There's additional trucks there that have been being parked on both lots, lot two sixty-four or address two sixty-four and address two fifty. The vehicles, as Mr. Rush said, there's approximately twenty-five vehicles that are parked in the rear of the property. Those vehicles go out during the day sometime between five and six in the morning. They come back at seven PM to be, um, to be stored and parked. Any type of, uh, mechanical work that has to be or is required on the vehicles happens within the garage that's also on the property. So there, there aren't any, there isn't any work that's being done outside. Any work to the vehicles is being done on, on the inside of the garage. The, uh, the, this application isn't asking for any, any change. We're asking to expand the operation, which has already been expanded.
Mr. Duva, do you have any knowledge of the actual, do you have any knowledge of the wetlands issue that was raised earlier from the application back in nineteen ninety-seven?
Yes, there is a wetland on the south side adjacent property. There's no wetland that's on the two sixty-four property. And I'm not familiar with the wetland that's on the two fifty property.
Is there wetland on two fifty? Do you even know that in fact?
I, I, I'm not aware of any wetland on that property.
Okay.
I just have a question with the guarantee of twenty-five vehicles. Are they all twenty-five pickup trucks?
Excuse me?
Are they twenty-five pickup trucks? What kind of vehicles are they?
They're, they're tandem trucks, they're dock trucks.
And what, what is your operation? Is it construction or are you waste removal?
It's, uh, transportation. It's not waste removal. It's transportation. The, the fleet of trucks is used to, to haul stone and and dirt and things of that nature for, uh, it's a subcontractor work for other contractors that require their stone and, and also dirt to be hauled.
Are they all tandem trucks?
Yes.
Or maintenance dumps?
Yeah, most of them are.
Okay, so how many are tandem?
Uh, I would say approximately twenty of them are tandem and, and there's also some utility trucks, smaller trucks that are used as, as maintenance trucks to go out on the road if they have to be filled with gas or something like that, mechanic trucks.
Okay, so, uh, you're requesting, um, storage of, uh, twenty tandem trucks and that's, uh, the truck as well as the, um, the, uh, back where you put the stone in, correct?
Requesting a total of twenty-five tandem trucks.
Well, you just testified twenty and five utility trucks.
Twenty, there's approximately twenty tandem trucks, five utility trucks, a total of twenty-five vehicles.
Okay. And then the five utility trucks are not tandem trucks?
That's correct.
Okay. And you basically, um, you'll pick up, um, quarry processor, some type of, uh, stone material from a quarry and bring it to a job site somewhere?
Uh, that's what the operation does, yes.
Okay, you don't store anything on site, correct?
No.
Other than the trucks and the truck bodies? Okay, thank you.
So I got a question to, to that end, Mr. King. So you're telling, uh, twenty-five is the maximum amount of trucks that are on that property at a given time? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then in regards to the, um, the, the material that's in these tandem trucks, you mentioned stone. Um, but you don't, you don't store any tires or anything like that? You got a lot of tires on the property. So, um, I would assume that some of these trucks are also transporting tires. Am I not correct in that?
No, that's not correct. The, the tires that are on the property, which will, will do a better job of making sure that there's not a stockpile of the tires. The tires are old tires that come off the trucks before they get removed from the property. They get stockpiled and then they get removed.
What's the ratio of, of vehicles of these twenty-five, um, maximum that you have that, um, that are like disabled or are out of service in a given time? Versus those who are, that are actively going back and forth between five AM and seven PM?
The trucks are in service. If they're, if the truck is not in service, it's in the garage being worked on to get out. We're not in the business of having trucks that can't produce income. The truck's gotta get back on the road as soon as possible.
Okay, so if it's, if it's out of the garage, they're all operative, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so the twenty-five vehicles, that doesn't count, um, the vehicles of your employees going to and from this site? That would be additional, correct?
Yes.
And how, how many cars are we talking about there? On a given average day?
There's probably about the same amount of cars, probably around twenty cars. There's probably about the same amount of cars, probably around twenty cars.
So twenty cars in addition to twenty-five tandem trucks?
Right, so the cars come in, they get parked, the trucks go out, and then they reverse when, at the end of the shift.
And you have office staff, right, there as well?
There's only two people in the office.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the witness?
Yeah, I have, I have another question, if I might. How long have you been using the rear fifty to, uh, the next door property?
Uh, I'm gonna guess that's going on for probably close to eight years.
And now? And did you have a lease initially?
We have a lease with the tenant, with the property owner next door, Dr. Forhop.
That's now, did you have a lease in the beginning?
We've always been, we didn't have a lease in the beginning. We were paying him for the, for the service of the property, but we didn't have a lease up until this year.
How many trucks do you look at eventually grow up, grow into?
We're not, we're not gonna add any trucks. That's, this is, the operation has been running like this for the past eight years.
Have you received any complaint? Have you received any complaints from the neighbors?
Excuse me?
Have you received any complaints from the neighbors, from the residents?
The, the only complaint that we've received, which wasn't a complaint, yesterday, the attorney, Mr. Rush spoke that earlier. The attorney who was on this call wrote an email, they had a subsequent phone conversation asking for certain, uh, accommodations, which we've agreed to, the three and a half, the four, as he said earlier.
So for eight years, you are using both the properties, you never had any complaints from the residents?
No.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Are, are we gonna be able to, are we gonna be able to talk to the attorney if he doesn't ask any questions from the apartment buildings?
I think it's up to him, Mr. Jaskowicz. I don't think we go seeking him out, is that correct, Mr. King?
Uh, we, that's, that, that is correct, but I would recommend that the attorney, um, and this so-called agreement, uh, that we've heard about would be memorialized between, uh, Mr. Rush and that attorney. And we incorporate that into any, um, resolution if this court, uh, so desires to act favorably on this application.
Yeah, 'cause, uh, 'cause I have questions around that. I mean, I understand, you know, you, you don't want to endure like a huge amount of expense in regards to, you know, that ten-foot-high fence that was alluded to earlier. But I mean, why, why wouldn't you want to improve the safety in and around that property? Because unlike what the engineer said, you, you do have residents there. You have houses around, you have apartments around, you have little kids that are around. And I'm just not sure, even from a liability perspective, why you wouldn't want to, um, uh, buffer yourself, no pun intended here, um, but, um, you, you would want to protect yourself from any liability of perhaps a, a kid straying and getting hurt? Um, or another scenario.
I think, as I said earlier at the beginning, my client didn't have an objection to the standard chain link fence that's currently there, making sure that it's in operable condition and/or possibly even putting up some buffering if it's required, some maybe abreviations or things of that nature. What they, he have an objection to, as I've mentioned earlier, is that the, uh, neighbor had asked for a ten-foot-high.
Right, understood, and, and understood. So when you, what, what's the height that your client would even consider? I mean, I would think you would wanna make, lock this property up so nobody can, well, first of all, trespass. And you know people scale walls and, you know, and fences. So I would think you would wanna make that as much of a deterrent as humanly possible, you know, and of course, within parameters of whatever expense that, you know, your client feels that they could absorb. But, um, you know, I mean, this is not something that a six-foot-high fence is gonna take care of, frankly.
With all, with all the respect, this was addressed twenty-five years ago, or twenty-three years, or twenty-four years ago, whatever it was. We had extensive testing, we had, we had extent, can everybody hear me, by the way?
Steve Cochran, can you hear me?
Excuse me, this is the, this is the owner, I want to just, what the gentleman said.
Wait, hold, hold, hold the phone, man, hold the phone. We addressed the residential property and in the application back in the nineties. The applicant was satisfied, I mean, the neighbor was satisfied with what we did twenty-three years ago. I want everybody to take that into consideration. This thing's been operating there since the mid-nineties. I don't think there's any, any evidence of vandalism, trespassing. I'm sure Mr. Duvah is gonna confirm that. So let's not try and reinvent the wheel here. Let's deal with the application for, for the additional piece of property, as the applicant has been saying, has been operating for the last eight years.
Now, hold on for a second, additional piece of property that he encroached on without permission that puts him closer to a residential area. I wasn't here twenty-five years ago. I'm not gonna be gagged with what was decided twenty-five years ago. It's just something that I'm putting, bringing up.
Hey, can you hear me? It's Steve Cochran calling. Can you hear me?
I think, Mr. Cochran, I think you're out of order at this point.
No.
You have an opportunity to question the witness when I ask for members of the public to have any questions.
And I apologize, I was muted, I just figured out how to unmute myself. All I wanna say is that we're not holding steady to a ten-foot steel fence. We just want some type of fence to be put in there. And my client has been looking at Follards, do you know what they are?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, again, I would recommend that, uh, any, uh, resolution of approval, if the board so chooses, would incorporate an agreement between these two, um, you, whatever the agreement is between these two, um, attorneys and property owners. I think that would hopefully satisfy, uh, the concern.
That's all we're asking.
Can we proceed now with the test? Are there any other questions of Mr. Duvah? I hear none and seen them. Mr. Cochran, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran, you wanna call your next witness?
Before, before we get there, Mr. Chairman, I had a conversation on the improvements back there. They said they weren't gonna put any lights up. Given the fact that the inquiry took place without any permits, I think we need some confirmation, are you gonna put lights up or not?
There aren't any lights planned to go up.
That's not the answer.
No.
Either no or yes.
No.
Okay. Do you have any lights in the existing lot?
Excuse me, no. We have a light on the building, we don't have any parking expansion light, just light on the building.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Rush, your next one?
Uh, yes, I'd like to call John McDonough, uh, the applicant's planner.
Hi, everyone.
Mr. McDonough, could you raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, you're a engineered planner and all your licenses are in full force and effect. And you provide testimony before this board and other boards in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Correct, except I'm not an engineer, just a planner.
Planner. Um, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, app, the app, the witness has been qualified as an expert in planning.
Hello, Mr. McDonough, happy?
Happy New Year, everyone, hope everyone's well.
Okay, uh, Mr. McDonough, you've heard, obviously, a lot of the, um, testimony, some of the questioning that's been going on so far. If you can just provide your review of the property from a planning perspective to the board?
Sure, we've, uh, we've conducted a, uh, standard planning analysis of the property, looked at the existing conditions, proposed conditions. We know that, uh, New Road is somewhat, uh, distinct in its character. In Parsippany, it sort of has a, a mix of uses, nicely co-mingling in past resolutions. Going back to the nineties, this site was recognized as a transitional lot between the residential uses that we see out there on forty-six and making our way to the non-residential uses over on, uh, the two eighty side. To form a predicate for my planning conclusions on the use relief that the applicant is seeking, I did put together a packet of maps and photographs to indicate for the board, uh, and orient the board as to site condition and, and site context, which I, I think are especially relevant here. And, Mr. Arcane, with, with your permission, and if I'm able to share a screen, or if that's able to work its way onto the screen, I'd like to share that.
Go ahead, Mr. McDonough, do you need, uh, our assistance, or can you just do that on your own?
He is a presenter at this point.
You're with me, um? Okay, are you seeing my screen, uh, which is a map?
No.
Strike one, we're gonna get there. There we go. Okay, uh, we're showing you a typical, uh, packet that we should usually show the board.
If you could hold for a second, um, counsel, would you like to mark this as an exhibit?
I, I would because it's, um, colored. I know that this is, uh, the drawing, but this is a colored one, so I'd mark it as a A1.
A1, and I know there's several beyond, beyond this, do you wanna mark them now, or should we just mark them as a?
Uh, Mr. McDonough knows how we do it, so as he brings them up, we'll mark them.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so, is this A1 for the record, I'm sorry?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so A1, sheet number one, show, is a simple tax parcel map. It shows the subject property outlined in yellow, which has that somewhat, I'll say, unique boot shape to it with its frontage on New Road. We know that lot twenty-five, the adjacent lot, is also part of the subject, to the extent that the rear parking, we'll talk about overlaps or is now overextending onto lot twenty-five. But just some of the basics about lot number twenty-six, it's zero point nine acres. It has been, and I'm flipping now over to sheet number two as part of A1. This shows the developed condition of the property with the dwelling in the front, storage building in the middle, the parking area in the back. All part of what was approved as part of that nineteen ninety-seven resolution that allowed for, I'll say, this dual use on the property, residential and, and non-residential uses. To the extent that the applicant is altering that storage building in the middle to incorporate an, an office-type use, it's an alteration of a non-conforming use, so the, the applicant is asking the board to move on use relief in that regard.
This marked as, uh, A2?
Okay, we'll, we'll do this as A2. Um, and again, for the record, A2 is simply going to be an aerial photograph overlaid on top of the tax parcel maps that we showed before. Over on lot number twenty-five, we have a converted residence, which was, um, approved in two thousand and three for dental use and a parking area that worked its way in back as well. And then you can see the area in question is in the back portion of that particular site on lot number twenty-five, where you can see, again, around that twenty-five-vehicle parking area, uh, that, as I look at aerial photographs, this happened around two thousand and three. Uh, it happened, I'd say, within the last eight to ten years or so, looking at historical aerial photographs. Now, I thought it was a good question about the fact that this would essentially be moving, um, this use closer to the apartment building in the back. But that said, just to remind the board, flipping back to A1 again, lot seven sixty-seven twenty-four and lot seven sixty-seven twenty-three, I was just in front of that board, uh, this board, rather, last year for the sanitation facility and the parking of trucks in the back on those two particular lots, which was approved by Use Variance. It's actually closer to that apartment building. And recall that that was an entire parking area that was coming in, uh, behind those two particular lots. So to the extent that we look at neighborhood compatibility from a planning standpoint, given what has already been endorsed here, this is a logical continuation, or I'll say, an infill of that which flanks this particular area. Truck parking, commercial parking is effectively on both sides of, of where this parking would go. I think the board has given good consideration to mitigating any impact on that apartment building to the back with the condition that it needs to be a mutual agreement amongst, amongst the parties. Some landscaping, which was also a condition of approval on lots twenty-three and twenty-four. Then I think the board also introduced, and I've, I've heard the stipulations as to the, the key noes that would go with this particular application. No outside repairs, no storage of garbage, debris or waste. Those are similar conditions to what we saw in the other application as well, and I think they're reasonable conditions that, uh, would equally apply here as well. Third frame takes us down to exhibit A3, which is going to be a color-coded land use classification map based on the MOD four land use classification system. Everything you see in red is non-residential. Everything you see in gold is residential, and then the gray, the green, uh, distinguishes industrial uses or undeveloped areas. Importantly, those two lots that I just described are shown in gold because they are residential, but they have been approved for non-residential. A4 shows the current zoning of the site. Now, we indicated L I W two slash R three based on what we saw on the tax map, I'm sorry, the zoning map in the G I S. Uh, we stand corrected based on, uh, Chaz's report that we're simply in the L I W two district. So it's probably just an error in the, in the zone map. It's really irrelevant to the, the planning considerations anyhow, because dual use is not allowed in, in either one of those two zones. So again, the applicant is asking to move on relief that we have dual use now on, on both particular sites. We went out there just before New Year's, floated a drone. This is what you see from New Road with a slightly elevated vehicle, a slightly elevated drone perspective, showing the residential building in the front and the commercial building in the back nicely masks that parking area. You get a glimpse of what is actually out there now behind lot number twenty-five, and that's the dental practice in the foreground and then the parking area behind that. Lastly, we floated it the other way, and this is what you see from the back with the dwelling on lot twenty-six in the front, the middle building showing the commercial building, the storage building, and then, of course, that parking area. And you can visualize how twenty to twenty-five vehicles would fit in that particular space back there and, and the condition of the property. And again, given a sense of the, the buffering of the, the surrounding area and the landscape. And again, reminding the board that this area targeted to the left of the proposed, uh, use that's before the board, has also been approved for a very similar parking lot condition as well.
And these fixtures are A5 and A6?
Yes, they are. So with that backdrop, again, in terms of the relief, the use relief for alteration of the pre-existing non-conforming dual use on lot twenty-six, residential and non-residential, use relief for the dual use on lot twenty-five, the extension of the contractor yard coexisting on the same lot as the dental practice, although, although there'll be no crossover between the two. In terms of the legal basis for relief, the statutory positive and negative criteria for use relief are met here. In terms of the positive, lot number twenty-five is particularly suited for this contractor yard because it is flanked by the exact same uses. Lot twenty-six is particularly suited for office use because it easily adapts into the storage building. Both uses are compatible with the non-residential and transitional character of the area. This is an infill development that will promote the planning goal for efficient use of land. Project will also promote the planning goal for a variety of uses in appropriate locations. New Road has emerged as a transportation corridor, a connector between forty-six and, and two eighty. Got the Wawa right down there, and this is a, a use that I believe is, is certainly more compatible than being located at the edge or in the heart of a, of a residential neighborhood. Counterbalancing that with the negative criteria, use relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public or to the zone plan. Proposed office use is akin to a flex space use, which we often see in industrial areas, partially used for office, partially used for storage. The proposed contractor yard is in what I would qualify as an isolated, confined, concealed space that is unperceivable from New Road. Neither use will interfere with the residential use on lot twenty-six or the dentist office on lot twenty-five. And in that regard, the degree- And in that regard, the degree of departure from the zone scheme is certainly not substantial here. With that, I would offer that the applicant has met its burden under the law, and approval is warranted in that the statutory criteria for grant of relief are met. With that, I'll pause for any questions or redirect.
John, uh, so you agree that buffering that fence, a a some sort of uh barrier fence, and maybe some vegetation that would grow uh maybe to eight or 10 feet would be substantial across the back?
Yes, I would offer that as a reasonable condition.
Well, do you do you know how much of a buffer on the adjoining lots was required?
It was an arborvitae row.
It was more than that?
I I looked at, I I'd have to go back and look at the resolution of of approval.
Would you agree to be equal?
Yes, I think that's reasonable.
So so when did we approve that? A year ago, two years ago? When did we approve?
It was at the end.
I'm sorry, when?
End of 2019.
And there was a lot of debate, if you remember, Mr. McDonough, in regards to that buffer and the noise and everything else before the vote was taken.
I do, yes.
Concerns about the activity and the intensification of that area in regards to the trucks, the idling, uh, what the residents are gonna see, the lights. So, um, yeah, this is a big concern in this area because there are residents there, and they're not going anywhere anytime soon.
Right, and again, just to underscore that resolution, I think that met that reached a positive resolution.
Do we know if there are any resident objectors here?
Other than 88 management, it's 104 unit complex on Edwards Road.
That portion of the meeting is not yet here. Uh, the chairman will um ask for any witnesses of the, you know, any uh questions of this witness, and then um when they close, uh, we can open up to any objectors or any people who are concerned.
Any other, any other questions by the board?
I I just have a quick statement. I really have to compliment you on that picture of December 2020 of the property, because I I pass on New Road, and it never looks so good. Um, to a degree, I I find it, um, you know, problematic in regards to aesthetics, and I know the engineer uh addressed it earlier. But uh, it, you know, at times it's borderline eyesore in the back there. It reminds me of the old, I I don't know your familiarity about Motville on 46, coming into the Pine Brook area, that old you know, um, junkyard area where they had a lot of the, you know, disabled cars and stuff.
GI Order Salvage.
I'm sorry? Yeah.
GI Order Salvage.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, from the road, it does not look that great. Um, I I'm hoping things, you know, it's all about being a good neighbor in this area, in this very unique area, as you so accurately put it, Mr. McDonough. That's all I have to say.
Any other questions of the? Are there any members of the public that have any questions of Mr. McDonough?
Other than what I've seen.
You didn't, Mr. Cochran, you don't have any questions of Mr. McDonough, is that correct?
Correct, sir.
Nor are there any hands up?
No hands raised.
Next witness, Mr.?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have no further witnesses. That concludes our presentation for the evening.
Okay, okay, at this time, I'm going to ask if there's any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application?
And just uh myself on behalf of 88 management, Mr. Rush and I have come to an agreement on, as he said, three and a half issues. The only remaining thing is the uh size and the location of the fence. But I have a, I have confidence that we'll be able to resolve that, but I would request that all four of our concerns be incorporated to any resolution this board issues.
And I agree with Mr. Cochran.
And that is the 10-foot fence or not? Is the 10-foot fence part of this?
No, I don't think the, you brought up a good point earlier, Bill, that we are bound by the uh uh height restrictions of the uh town. My client, as I said, is looking into something called bollocks, or they're like uh expandable things that would stop a runaway truck.
Bollocks?
Yeah, I haven't heard of them myself.
Well, 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 bollocks are not bollocks are not a buffer material, they're safety.
If I could, if I could intervene here, that whether the discussion was the prior application on lots 23 and 24, I found that resolution, and that resolution said the applicant's gonna plant eight to 10 feet green giant trees along the berm of the back of the lot to create a buffer between the residential apartment complex. Um, I don't believe my client has any objection to more or less following along the line so that it it actually has a more uniform look to the rear of the properties as well.
The point, the point on that, the point on that is the green area between the parking area and the property boundary, I believe, was 25 feet.
And okay, again, I wasn't, I don't, I'm just reading off the resolution.
But Mr. McDon, Mr. McDonough agreed that it would be appropriate. So I'm not trying to make this hard, but if if the testimony says I got the same thing next to me, I want the same, then that's what it should be.
Well, when we're saying a buffer, are we talking about a buffer?
We're talking about your, the approved plan next door has a green area in the back. It's got some landscaping in there, and it's got some fencing. The green space separates the parking area from your property line. Right now, you're not 25 feet off your property line either.
And is that subject to the um?
Yeah, but that, that's the testimony of Mr. McDonough, that yes, it would be appropriate.
I'd like to recall Mr. McDonough then, because I don't think that's what he was testifying to.
Well, that's what I asked him.
Mr. McDon, was that your understanding that you were agreeing to a 25-foot buffer coming in off of off our client's property line? Or were you just agreeing to more or less a line of trees in order to put up some type of bringing some type of protection to the neighbor in the rear?
The the way I understood the question honestly was the was the composition of the of the plant materials, and I I thought it was our just arborvitae there. I don't remember what the width differential was on on the other property. I just, I just remember the the plantings, some sort of, some sort of green edge along the perimeter of the property there.
Now, John, in your testimony earlier was that it does appear that there is substantial, I guess, distance between our property line and where the actual units begin, the actual unit, the living area is, correct?
Right, this this property is catty corner relative to the apartments, whereas the the other apartment was immediately behind.
So I think what we're talking about agreeing to is some type of, like we said, some type of line of buffering along the property line with it being a fence or some type of arborvitae, if we want, if you want a more uniform look. I don't think we were agreeing to a buffer area of 25 feet coming in off the property line. That's, that's not obviously what we were requesting here. Because that would substantially impact the ability to put the square footage available to park the cars or trucks.
How do we know that?
I'm sorry?
How do we know that would substantially affect your client?
Well, I have to assume 25 feet coming in off a property line would reduce the 9,000 feet that are available now.
You said you were only using 4,500 of them.
I didn't say that. I don't, who's too tough?
Your engineer did.
Yeah.
He testified they they're using 4,500 of the square of the rear property?
Yes, between 45 and 5,000.
Now, I mean, if if you go back to the picture of that, I think it was A6 that Mr. McDonough?
Why? Why don't we do this?
To check, the property to the north is roughly 4,500 square feet, give or take. Remember, the property to the south, 264, has been in existence since 97. So I'm not sure if Mr. Chadwick is suggesting that you run a 25-foot buffer along the entire rear property line of both properties. But the application is for the northern property, 250, unless I'm mistaken.
Let me, let me, let me interject again. The basic question to John McDonough was, should the transition buffer area be similar and equal to what he described as the approved uh use variance for the adjoining property? The answer to that was yes. So why don't we just leave it this way? I don't know if it was exactly, I don't keep files forever. And I looked for that, and I didn't get it. I couldn't find it. So I don't know if it's 25 feet, 50 feet, or 5 feet. But it was something. We all, we could agree there was landscaping and fencing.
And the resolution for?
For adjoining, that's it.
The resolution for the 23 and 25, I mean, 23 and what was it? Uh, 23, 22, whatever it was, for the the garbage uh removal says, doesn't say anything about feet, it just says they're gonna plant green trees along the berm in the back of the lot to create a buffer. I'm not going to agree to 25 feet. That's not part of the testimony, it's not part of this.
Mr. Rush, that's that's really up to the board, because if the board makes a condition of any resolution.
No, I I understand that. I understand that, Mr. King. I'm just saying, though, that that wasn't part of our testimony, and obviously, that's not what we're asking for. We're asking for it to be treated similarly, which is the way I'm reading it, is a line of trees or a fence.
There's a site plan that's involved with that approval. Distance there between the parking and the back property line, simple as that.
If it's a safety concern, I believe that Mr. McDonough kind of addressed that by showing that there is a buffering between where the residence residential units begin and the client's property line. There's some about 20, I believe, 20 feet or so, 20, 25 feet or so of of property owned by the apartment buildings that's basically buffering land there. We're not right up against the units.
Excuse me, this is Mr. McDonough, is it okay?
I'm sorry, who is that?
This is Mr. Duba. Would it be okay if I address the board?
Yes.
In in my 1997 approval, we have a a fence that was installed that's still there, and we also have a a green tree line that we could put in there. Behind my property, as Mr. Rush was stating, there is land that's owned by the apartment complex that is used for storage of sometimes when they're doing maintenance to their apartments or so on and so forth. Mr. Cochran can speak to that. We're in a different situation than the new approval that I'm learning about from Garden State Management that's directly abutting their property. We already were approved for the buffer that we have. We want to continue to use that buffer for for this property in this previous approval. If we started at 25 feet inside of our property line, we wouldn't have the ability to run our operation. That would.
And I don't understand why we just can't continue to pass it. Why can't we just continue the 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 demarcation line from your property onto the property and make it even? If it's work this far, why can't we just continue it along? What?
That would be fine for me. I could do. Yes, I can do that. I can read the same paper that I have on 264, 250. But I can't, I can't agree to do what they're doing on a property that I own.
And you're, and you're going to plant, you'll you'll plant a substantial amount of evergreens or or some vegetation along that fence line to give a a natural buffer to the to the neighbors?
I will, and like we said earlier, we'd be happy to work along, if we put in the resolution, work with Mr. Cochran, we'll show them what we're planning to do.
Existing chain link fence is sort of deteriorated, so that's why we're talking about a new fence.
Yeah, we're happy to do that, Mr. Cochran. We'll put a new fence, and if you'd like us to put some type of uh hedge, we could put a hedge as well.
I can work that out.
I thank you for that.
Do we have any other questions of the witnesses? We're okay there?
Yeah, uh, Chairman. Chairman, I have a question. Uh, there is a report from the Division of Fire Prevention, something about the width of the driveway. Did someone uh go over that and uh tell us what you are planning to do?
Um, I can just address the fact that I think that the width of the driveway was addressed in the 97 uh resolution, and at this time, there's no planned changes to that. Again, that's property 264 where the driveway is located, and there's no proposed changes to that. So my client's intending on leaving it the way it is, as.
So you'll you'll comply with the recommendations of the fire department in that letter?
As far as striping and things like that, yes, of course.
And also the width, because I think it did, it it's a 22 um foot wi- width, and they thought that you wanted to reduce it to 18?
Um, Mr. Duba, can you address that? I'm not sure of the actual width of the Duba can address that.
Uh, yes, I could address it. We have not made any plan, or we have no reason to reduce the width of the the driveway. It's a a Belgium block-lined driveway that's been there from 1997. We have no intention on making any changes to it.
All right, so you'll comply with the recommendations of the fire department?
I I'm not familiar with what they are, but as long as they're striping and things of that nature, that's fine. We're we're happy to do that.
Yeah, that's basically, it's a, just require striping.
Okay.
Any other questions by the board? At this point, are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application?
There are no hands raised.
In support of the application? No hands raised?
Correct, no hands raised.
Hey, I got a question, I got a question on this. Um, how 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 is this all noticed? Um, is this noticed to the landlord of the apartment building and not the actual renters that have these units that face?
The rest, the tenants do not get notified.
Okay, so they would have no idea this is happening. Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm gonna ask if we need to go into conference, or if we can just put together a punch list of everything that has to go into the resolution? If everybody would like to add whatever they think, and make sure we discussed everything. Uh, what's the call, conference or no conference?
No, either way.
I I take that as a no conference. Okay, so let's discuss everything that needs to be done here. The fence, the vegetation, the hours of operation. Help me out, please.
Yeah. I mean, the the condition of the property would be uh helpful, because it is an eyesore.
To maintain the property in a in a.
Better than they have been.
Right. Um, to work with the, work with the um town forester with regard to the vegetation, to work with the uh neighbor's attorney to resolve any of those issues that were discussed. Um, Mr. Chadwick, is there anything else? No?
No, nobody has any.
There's the, there's the amendment to the uh note with regard to the action of the um parking site, number of vehicles.
And what about, what about the wetlands? Are we gonna require a?
I think we should. I think we need to be prudent on this.
They get a letter of no, no distance from the uh whoever they're gonna file it with.
And also to update the plan for the purview surface for the gravel parking.
Yeah, good point.
And there will be no lights in the parking lot.
Right, I was gonna say another one.
And no additional signage?
No additional signage.
Uh, John, with regard to, you said a LOI, a letter of what? About the wetlands?
It's a letter of absence or e- existence, one or the other.
Okay.
And DEP signs off on it. We need to know the size of the office space they're asking for?
The office space is already there.
But he said he was actually asking for us to approve it. No.
I don't remember that.
Mr. Rush, is that true that we needed a barrier? Mr. Rush, is that true that we needed a variance to the?
Um, again, now, uh, Mr. Doob, are you, is there an office space located on your, on the garage in your property?
Within the garage, there's an office space and there's architectural floor plan for it if the board wants to see it.
And approximately, what's the size of that?
Uh, I'd be guessing at it. Um.
Well, is it there?
May maybe give or take. Eight hundred square feet.
Is it already there?
It's already there.
Right.
Right, and it's tricky for your use, you're not renting out offices, correct?
No.
And it was pre-approved in nineteen ninety-seven?
No.
Oh, it didn't show in the ninety-seven plan?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
There we go.
There we go.
So we had the, we had the office approval of it of approximately eight hundred square feet plus or minus?
Correct.
Did we get the number of trucks in there?
Twenty-five.
Uh, no, twenty tandems and five support.
I I would make a recommendation that we vote to authorize the attorney. To draw up the resolution uh in concert with Mr. Rush and Mr. Cochran to make sure we get all these points that everybody's fat coming happy. Uh, does that sound reasonable?
Yep.
Yes, good idea.
Okay, so that last yep, Mr. Detwilland, you've just uh uh agreed to that resolution?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second, Burke.
Second, Snyder.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Burke.
Yes.
Eckwood.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Marie.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Willand?
Yes.
Hurricane.
Yeah. Okay, I want to thank everyone. Um, now, uh. We have one more case, but it is now nine. Nora, what is, who uh Bruce here for the BAP's case?
Chairman, thank you, members of the board, thank you very much. Have a great evening, Charles.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Doob.
Thank you, thank you to the board.
Is the attorney for BAP?
Yes, President.
I I don't think we're going to be able to hear the cases quarter to ten. And to start the case at this point would be um um not really beneficial. Uh, therefore, um, I'm asking Nora, give us a carry date.
Um, I just want to throw out there that next Wednesday, we have a special meeting, a single application. Is it possible we can put this one on? The third day?
Uh, if if we can, we can schedule it subject to the avail, time availability. I don't remember how difficult that case was going to be. That was the, that's the one on Hill Road? Do you, do you know if there's any objectives or anything on that, Nora?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
That I'm aware of.
So we could carry this case to next Wednesday, next Wednesday, subject to availability of time, if that's acceptable. Who am I talking to? Who's the attorney, by the way? Is there an attorney here?
Kevin DeSai.
Mr. DeSai, you're the attorney representing the applicant?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, would that be acceptable? We'll carry this case to next Wednesday night, uh, subject to availability and we'll do our best, get the. Get, you know, get this, it's heard, okay?
That 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 should be fine, thank you.
Should be fine, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to carry this case?
So much.
Wednesday.
Tensions.
Tensions.
Just. So more.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Nora, is there any other business?
That's it.
That's it.
So I have a motion to adjourn.
So move Snyder.
So move. Happy New Year, all. Aye.
Thank you, thank everyone. For um your continued service and, you know, there's been some negative things on Facebook about this being a. Um group and it should be elected officials, I think uh. A lightweight is is spreading out there.
Mr. Idrick. Mr. Idrick.
Yes.
I wanna, I wanna say I I watch you guys do this great work today and I am very thankful to all of you. And I want to play golf where you're playing right now.
I, in, in County, Ocean County, the courses don't close, oh, thank God. I go to the end of every weekend, that's my part-time residence. But I'm still a resident of Precipity, that's who I vote, that's who my driver's license, I don't want any questions asked, I'm not a Precipity resident. But anyway, uh, thank you once again and and we'll go from there, okay?
Be careful.
Thank you.
Well.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Night.
Night.
See you in the morning, Casey.
Okay, yeah, see you, seven o'clock.
Okay, bye.
All right.
Night, Ready. Good night. Night, Nora.
Good night.
Night, John Boy.